Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 13th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business, we have the pledge of allegiance. So Councilman Kincaid, will you leave us, please?
Will do. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Since this is the first meeting of our new four-year term, we'll actually swear in all of our council members tonight, as well as the clerk treasurer and myself, the mayor. So we'll do this by council district order first. So first up will be City Council District 1, Mike Kincaid, if you want to step to the podium. And Judge Shine will swear you in.
All right.
Do you need somebody to hold your Bible mic?
My wife has one, but can you hold for me?
Sure.
Please place your hand on the Bible and raise your right hand.
Raise your right.
I, Mike Kincaid, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, sorry.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
And diligently discharge.
The duties of the office of city common council member.
The duties of the office of city common council member.
District 1.
District 1.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell?
Next up is District 2, Keith Campbell.
I, Keith Campbell, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
Diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of the city common council member.
City common council member.
District 2.
District 2.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next up is District 3, Caleb Edwards.
Yep, you're right there, guys.
You can do her.
Camera's better over there.
Please raise your right hand. I, Caleb Edwards.
I, Caleb Edwards.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
And diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the city common council member, 3rd district.
Of the city common council member, 3rd district.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next will be Dick Robertson, City Council District 4. If you need it, Dick. Yep. You mean, hold it?
I'd like the backup. Thanks. The backup button.
I, Richard Robertson.
I, Richard Robertson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
And diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the city common council member.
Of the city common council member.
District 4.
District 4.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next up will be District 5, John Copeland.
I, John Copeland. Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
Diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the city common council member.
Of the city common council member.
District 5.
District 5.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Next up will be City Councilwoman Ciara Messenger, at large.
I, Ciara Messenger.
I, Ciara Messenger.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
And diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the city common council member.
Of the city common council member.
At large district.
At large district.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next will be Brent Wheat, for City Council at large, as well.
Please raise your right hand. I, Brent Wheat.
I, Brent Wheat.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
Diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of the city common council member.
Of the city common council member.
At large district.
At large district.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next will be City Clerk Treasurer, Tanya Thayer. What did Tanya?
Everybody knows her. Melissa.
I, Tanya Thayer.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
And diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
Of the office.
Of city clerk treasurer.
City clerk treasurer.
For Lebanon, Indiana.
For Lebanon, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to the law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
And last but not least, Mr. Mayor Gentry.
Please raise your right hand.
I, Matthew Gentry.
I, Matthew Gentry.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And the Constitution of the State of Indiana.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And diligently discharge.
Diligently discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of mayor.
Of mayor.
For the city of Lebanon, Indiana.
For the city of Lebanon, Indiana.
According to the law.
According to the law.
To the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I know it's a long road to get here, and I know we're all excited to start the next term. So I knew there are some pictures we want to take, so we'll entertain a motion to brief the recess for five minutes, and then we'll take some pictures and then come back and finish the rest of our agenda. Is that all right?
Make a motion.
Motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Okay, we are at recess, and we'll resume shortly.
We want to get all the council together so we can.
We want to get all the council together so we can...
Counsel, could we all look at Joe real quick, too? With Abby right there in front of us.
I don't want to look.
Okay, enough pictures for four years, right, guys? Very good.
Exactly.
All right, would you entertain a motion to come back from recess?
No move.
Yep, all right. First item up, and I know we have to elect council positions as well, too. And Dick, is that one president? I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, we need to make a motion to elect a new council president for this year. Is there any nominations?
Actually, hold on a second. I'm sorry. I realize we have not taken a roll yet.
No.
Madam Corky, call the roll, please.
Sure. Councilman Kincaid.
Present.
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilman Edwards.
Here.
Councilman Robertson.
Here.
Councilman Copeland.
Here.
Councilman Wheat.
Present.
Councilmember Ciara Messenger.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Sorry, now, Dick.
So I'll entertain a motion, or the mayor could entertain a motion, for council president.
Make a motion. We nominate Dick Robertson as president of Lebanon City Council.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Nominate Dick Robertson as Lebanon City Council president. Motion second. For Brent.
Thank you.
For the discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Congratulations, Dick. You're now City Council president.
Thank you very much. I look forward to trying to do the best job I can the second time around.
Absolutely. Do we do a vice president, too, or is it just...
We probably ought to. We, I don't know that we have in the past, and I probably, I don't... Do you think we should?
Do what? Vice president?
Just in case. I think we've only had one time where the mayor was gone and I was going to, at the same time, and I think Keith ran it.
Let's do just, let's do it just in case that way.
Okay.
In case something happens.
Okay.
So entertain a motion for vice president, City Council. I can't make the motion. It's up to you guys.
I will motion, Keith. Is that something you're up to?
Yep. All right, I'll make a motion. Keith Campbell will be VP of City Council.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second to make Keith Campbell vice president of Lebanon City Council for discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Congratulations, Keith. All right, next we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from our previous meeting. Any changes to those minutes?
Make a motion. We approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that is approved. No old business. It's the first one of the year, so we'll move on to new business. And the first resolution up for this year is Resolution 2020-01, Consideration of 2019 City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan. Shouldn't be the 2020 comprehensive plan now?
That was completed in 2019.
Fair enough. All right.
Semantics, I guess. Good evening, council members. I'm not going to take a whole lot of your time because we gave you a more formal presentation late last year, so just some couple of quick updates for you. Just recap what we discussed the last time. We've been working on the update to the comprehensive plan for probably going on two years now. It's taken a little bit of time to get it the way we want it, but we do have the final plan ready for you for adoption this evening. Just a quick reminder for those that are new on the council and for those in the audience, our comprehensive plan is a little bit different. Actually, it's a little bit different than anything else anybody's done in the state of Indiana thus far. We will not have a printed document, a static document that's available. This is actually a web-based plan, so anybody that's interested in finding out information about our future development plans or planning for the city of Lebanon will be able to find that on our website. That website will be up and running. It is, it is up and running on a, on a temporary website right now. We'll move it over to its permanent home as soon as the adoption is complete, and it'll be able, be available for anybody to view who is either interested in developing or investing in the city of Lebanon, or those who live here and just want to see how, what we might be planning in the next 10 years might impact them as a resident of Lebanon. Like I said, it's, it's up and running. We've addressed any changes or corrections that I have seen. We did, we did change the picture on the homepage to a picture of City Hall, so we made sure that that was a more appropriate image there. But everything else is up and ready to go. So just kind of the process here, what the, what the resolution says is that this will essentially replace and repeal any previous adopted plans that are in conflict with this. What that means is our 2007 comprehensive plan will be repealed and replaced by this comprehensive plan. Some of the addendums that we've made, like the downtown plan and thoroughfare plan, will still remain in effect as addendums to this new comp plan because this is not, certainly they are not in conflict with what's in this new plan. So this will just, in effect, replace that 2007 plan and all the addendums like of those, those matters will remain in place. So that's really all I have for tonight, unless you had some specific questions about the revised comp plan that we presented to you last time.
Ben, I have one question for you.
Yes, sir.
During section two of the resolution.
Uh huh.
It talks about, all the prior ones are repealed and deemed to conform to the provisions, but I understand going forward, what happens when we have to change these things to get them on the website?
So I, what I, yeah, what I envision, at least procedurally, is that I'll be working to create a small comprehensive plan committee that'll meet once or twice a year to review how we're progressing on certain goals in the plan, to look and see if any goals need to change or be updated, or if there's anything else we need to add. If, if they're minor changes, I think we can do those just in-house administratively. If it's something that's significant that alters the comprehensive plan, the goals, et cetera, then it would have to come back for a revision that's adopted by the council again. But I, I wouldn't expect those to happen any more frequently than maybe, maybe once a year, maybe once every other year where we do some major overhaul that would require an amendment adopted by the council. Minor changes will, will be reviewed by the, by that committee that's set up, and then we can make those in-house. The website's set up so that we have the ability to go in the back end in our department and update the text, update images on the fly. And that's really the intention, is to make sure that this, this document, website, is updated on an ongoing basis so it stays relevant.
What I'm saying is the committee has to approve it.
Yeah, it'll be a decision made by the committee if something needs to be updated. That's the intention. That's the plan right now.
What I'm saying is, not just you, but in the future, whatever changes, the new, anything can, a new city council, new mayor, whatever.
Yes.
Can't make those changes arbitrarily, is what I'm asking.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's...
We change something, it's been done above board.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. I, I would expect if we have a major overhaul of the council or the mayor, you know, four, eight years from now, that they will likely want to, the plan to reflect their vision for the community moving forward. That would be a more major change that likely would require adoption by the city council. But I would expect that on an ongoing basis that this committee, and I expect there to be a council member on this committee, by the way, if anybody wants to volunteer tonight. But I do want representation from the plan commission and the council. I want some representative from the community, and then, of course, representatives from the planning staff to be able to look at this on an ongoing basis and determine where changes might be necessary. It'll be simple things, you know? If, if we've accomplished a goal and there's nothing more to do, then we'll list it as accomplished and, and take it off the website. If there's a goal that we just decide two years from now, boy, that was the dumbest idea we ever came up with, we need to change this, and then we'll, we'll do that. So I, I expect that to flow through that committee.
Okay. Any other que, Dick, do you have some questions?
No, no. He, that was the same question.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Could you say the name of the website again, or is that...
It's on, it's on a temporary website right now. It's, the, the final resting place will be lebanonredefined.com.
All one word, or is there an I in there?
All one word.
Okay.
That, that right now is, is the, the page that we've been using through the process, so it's got meeting materials and things like that on it. So we're going to replace what's up there now with the final comprehensive plan.
I think I knew that. I just wanted to confirm.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have a quick comment. I just want to say, I was looking over it again today, and I think, I'm so impressed with what you guys have done. I think it's going to be very user-friendly for people and very informative, and I'm really excited that you guys have done that because it's going to give, it's going to open up that information to the public even more. So I'm just, I think you guys did a great job. Just wanted to say that. Can't wait for the public to be able to see it.
I think we hope to win an award, right, Ben? You want to submit?
I think that was one of the goals from the start. One of the goals was to create a plan that was both useful for everybody in this room, but then also something that's more user-friendly to the general public, that's not used to seeing large academic planning documents, something that's a little more relevant to them. But certainly also would be nice to go after a couple of awards.
Well, and as you mentioned, no one in Indiana has an online-based plan, so we are kind of charting new territory here with this, so hopefully we recognize for that.
The examples we found were in places like Texas and some of those other states like that, so we were not able to find anything that's exactly like this in Indiana.
My, my only comment would be that Mayor, and you and I have attended, and some others here have attended, the AIM Conference, and there's nice city awards that have been presented, and this would be a great idea.
Make sure we submit it.
To, to submit something like this, being it's probably the only one in the state of Indiana, and be something that we think about when they start coming out with those suggestions for awards.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, so.
Rob, do you want to read the, not the entire thing, obviously, but just...
Go ahead.
149 pages.
Yeah, and then I'll open up a public comment as well.
Sure. All right, thank you, Mayor. Counsel, this is, again, Resolution 2020-01, adopting the 2019 City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan. This council has the duty and the authority to review, amend, and approve amendments to the Lebanon City Comprehensive Plan. Comprehensive Plan was adopted by the city of Lebanon on February 12, 2007, and amended on August 14, 2017 by Resolutions 2017-15 and 2017-16. The Lebanon Plan Commission held a public hearing on December 16, 2019 for docket number 19-41, titled 2019 City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan as Required by Law. The Lebanon Plan Commission found that the comprehensive plan was in accordance with the promotion of the public health, safety morals, convenience, order, and general welfare for the sake of efficiency and economy in the process of development of the community, and is certified to this council its adoption by a vote of six ayes and zero nays. This council hereby adopts the 2019 City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan, and in my copy I did print it out and attach it as Exhibit A, and it's incorporated herein. All prior, as Ben Bontrager indicated, adopted resolutions and exhibits that are in conflict herewith are repealed and deemed to conform to the provisions of this 2019 City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan. This resolution shall be in full force effect immediately upon passage.
Okay. Any further discussion from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment questions? Okay. At this time, then, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2020-01.
I make a motion. We approve Resolution 2020-01, the 2019 City Lebanon Comprehensive Plan.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I think it was Caleb. Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that Resolution 2020-01 is adopted. Thank you, Ben. Thank you for all the hard work.
Yeah, thank you, counsel. I do want to just make sure I mention Adam Peiper from Rundell Earnsbury. I want to thank them. They were the consultant on this project, and we've been working with them for the last two years on this, and so kudos to them as well. I'm sure they'll, they'll help us present at AIM for our award, so.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, that concludes all I have for new business. Anything from council?
We have some board appointments.
Yep.
That we need to make for this year.
Do you do that in a council meeting, or do we do it by submitting them to, just submitting to, or you guys already have decided, or...
Yeah, we've, we've kind of come up with a selection. I'd like to throw those out on the table.
I think any fun?
To let the council to...
Go for it.
Discuss, and, and, and we'll, we'll take a vote on whatever.
Yep.
Board of Works, Al Milburn and I currently sit on that board. We both are willing to serve continually on that board. The Plan Commission, there's Keith. He's been on a board a long time. He's still interested in serving. Abby Paddock, Ashley, I'm sorry, Ashley Paddock, and Brian Tandy, both are still willing to serve on the Plan Commission. The BZA, Bruce Polly is up. He is also still willing to serve. And on the RDC, it's Caleb and I are on that board, and, but, of course, both of us are willing to continue to serve. So I'd like to put those out there for the council. If there are acceptance of that, I think we could accept them all at one time. If not, we could do it one at a time, and if somebody has another appointment, we could discuss that.
Any discussion concerning the city council nominations for boards? Okay. Would entertain, I guess you need to make a motion then to...
I will make a motion. We accept these appointments for the boards of Board of Works, Plan Commission, BZA, and RDC for 2019.
2020. 2020.
2020, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Any other business from council? Any public comment discussion? Okay. At that time, then, we'll move on to claims, and we'll entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Move to approve the claims is submitted. We have motion to approve the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, claims are approved, and we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. We adjourn today's meeting?
Motion to adjourn and a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned. Our next city council meeting will be Monday, January 27, at 7:15 p.m. Thanks for watching.